The hour of 6:30 having come and gone two minutes ago, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, May 2, 2023, and ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
President Curry.
Here.
President Curry is present. Duncan.
Here.
Duncan is present. Evers.
Here.
Evers is present. Field. Field is present. Vice President Figueroa Cole.
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole is present. Govendar Rajan. Govendar Rajan is present. Harrington McKinney is excused. Knox.
Present.
Knox is present. Latimer Burris.
Present.
Latimer Burris is present. Madison.
Present.
Madison is present. Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Martinez Rutherford is present. Madsi.
Present.
Madsi is present. Rumel.
Present.
Rumel is present. Slack.
Slack.
Slack is present. Tischler.
Here.
Tischler is present. Verveer.
Here.
Verveer is present. Vidiver. Vidiver is present. Wahelia.
Here.
Wahelia is present. Bennett? Conklin. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start tonight's meeting with two honoring resolutions. And for the benefit of new council members, if we have folks present to accept the honoring resolutions, we will read them. In this case, we do. So Item 1 is Legisstar 77039 proclaiming May 2023 to be Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Madison. Alder Vidiver will read the resolution. Alder?
Whereas Jewish immigrants to America, ever since their first arrival to our shores in the 16th century, have played an active role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States of America. And whereas the history of the Jewish people and the enduring values of the Jewish faith were vital sources of inspiration for the founding of the United States, the civil rights movement, America's global leadership in the cause of freedom, and Americans' commitment to social justice. And whereas through core Jewish beliefs, such as the inherent equality and dignity of all people, and the importance of civic duty, personal responsibility, lifelong education, and ongoing commitment to build a more just and compassionate society, the Jewish community has helped to define America's character and values. And whereas Jewish residents take responsibility for the building and thriving of our Madison community, including by serving in local and state government, and on city boards, commissions, and committees, and whereas for 42 years, every president of the United States has declared a period of time for celebrating the contributions to the United States of the Jewish community's history, heritage, and culture. And since 2006, the month of May has been presidentially declared to be Jewish American Heritage Month pursuant to a bipartisan resolution of Congress. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Madison Common Council and Mayor proclaim and celebrate May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Madison. Be it further resolved that the Common Council and Mayor call upon all Madisonians to commemorate this occasion by celebrating the contributions of Jewish Americans to our community.
Thank you, Alder. We'll take that as moved by Alder Vidiver. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We have Allen Klugman here to accept the proclamation. Come to either microphone.
I'm delighted on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Jewish Federation of Madison to accept the resolution from the city recognizing March 2023 as Jewish Heritage Month. This resolution reminds Madison's Jewish community of some 5,500 people, that we matter, that our work matters at a time of increased antisemitism throughout the United States. In pursuing its mission to inspire, build, and sustain vibrant Jewish community by fostering diverse opportunities to connect at every age and mobilizing our community in common purpose in Madison, Israel, and around the world, the Jewish Federation partners with its non-Jewish brethren to provide service and support. Our Camp Shalom here in Verona will welcome 900-plus campers this summer, of whom 40% are not Jewish. Thank you again for this honor.
Thank you very much. We do have a printed copy of the resolution for you. And I suspect staff will want to get a picture of you in the alder. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Item 2 is Legisstar 77480 recognizing May 2023 as Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American Heritage Month in the city of Madison. We have, I believe, three alders who will be reading, starting with Alder Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. So whereas Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American Heritage Month is a time to honor the important contributions of Asians, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Desi-Americans to the history of the United States, and whereas the month of May was selected for Asian Pacific American Heritage Month because the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May 7, 1843, and the first transcontinental railroad was completed on May 10, 1869, with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants, and whereas the people of Wisconsin join together each May to pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asians, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Desi-Americans who have enriched the history of the United States, and whereas the history of Asians, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and Desi-Americans in Wisconsin is inextricably tied to the story of Wisconsin, and...
Whereas there are approximately 22 million U.S. residents who identify as Asian, approximately 1.6 million U.S. residents who identify as Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, comprising nearly 7% of the total population, and whereas Wisconsin APIDA population totaled 194,173 in 2020 and has increased 82% since the 2000 census, and whereas the APIDA community is an inherently diverse population, composed of more than 45 distinct ethnicities, more than 100 language dialects, and whereas in the immigration of Hmong refugees from Laos to Wisconsin from 1975 through the 1990s enriched the state immeasurably, as Wisconsin has the third-largest Hmong population in the U.S., and...
Whereas Asian Pacific Islander and Desi-Americans represent at least 9.1% of the population of Madison, and whereas Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American Heritage Month provides the people of Madison and Wisconsin with an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the achievements, contributions, and history of the APIDA community and understand the challenges they face. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Madison Common Council and Mayor recognize Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American Heritage Month as an important time to celebrate the significant contribution of Asians, Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders and Desi-Americans to the history of Madison and Wisconsin, and recognize that Asian, Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and Desi-American communities strengthen and enhance the rich diversity of Madison and Wisconsin.
Thank you, Alders. We will take that as moved by Alder Govendar Rajan and seconded by Alder Wahili Hef. That's all right. And then we have three folks here to accept the proclamation, Renee Mo, Ashley Chiang, and Ankita Pahardwaj. Would any of you like to speak? Ankita?
Thank you, Alder Nasra Wahili and Alder MGR Govendar Rajan for putting forward this resolution and recognizing our APIDA population. Thank you, Mayor, as well. APIDA stands for Asian Pacific Islander Desi-American. The word "American" in the abbreviation has always made me think of those of us who contribute to this society through our skills, labor, and our tax dollars while not being able to call ourselves Americans. As of 2018, 13.7% of U.S. population is comprised of immigrants. Indians from India form the fourth-largest demographic of undocumented folks in the U.S. Today, I want to honor those of us who are just statistics. Talking about those of us who are citizens, in 2022 midterm elections in Wisconsin, eligible APIDA voters showed up by a staggering 201% as compared to 2018. We showed up to reelect Governor Tony Evers and Attorney Josh Kahl as a testament to the fact that no change is possible without us. This council has seen some amazing APIDA leaders, including Alder Shivabidar and Alder Sayed Mustajab Abbas, without whom so many key ordinances, projects, and changes would not have been possible. Today, we have Alder Govendar Rajan doing us proud. But our representation has never been proportional to the number of APIDA people in Madison and Wisconsin, as it wasn't until 2020 that the State Assembly in Wisconsin saw its first Asian-American in the history of this country, and we still have yet to see a South Asian representation in that decision-making body. The fact that one of the most populous continents on Earth with one of the largest numbers of diaspora in the United States has little to no representation speaks a story a lot of us don't have time or willingness to hear. Therefore, this resolution moving forward as a proud member of Desi diaspora, I sincerely hope we get equal representation like others and that we are seriously considered, acknowledged, and served by elected officials up and down the ballot. In the spirit of racial justice, the progressive side keeps touting during elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley?
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley Chiang, and I am a student here at UW Madison, and I've lived here since 2020. And at that time was a really big election, and I signed up to be an election official. And I remember walking in this room at that time, and I was helping fill absentee ballots. So it's really cool to be back here in a very different context. And yeah, I just want to say thank you for passing this resolution. It means a lot as a young Chinese-American woman to see people who look like me honored and recognized in a space where that's often not the case, especially in a predominantly white town and a predominantly white university. And so, yeah, I really appreciate you inviting me here and honoring people I consider my friends and family during this time. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Renee?
Thank you very much to the council, to the alders who sponsored this, to the mayor and all the city staff for this recognition. As your leader of United Way of Dane County, it's really an honor to partner with you, and I thank you for your service, and we'll continue to work together to increase family well-being because we know that's community well-being. So thank you all for the recognition, and again, thank you all for your leadership and service.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the recipients. And we did get group photos beforehand, but Larissa will get... So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection? Alder Madison, did you wish to speak?
Yes. Just a... So thank you, Mayor. So just I want to make a quick clarification, just for the record. So I do want to thank Representative Francesca Hong when I reached out to her to ask for language to help me craft a resolution. And I want to thank my colleagues, Representatives Wahili and MGR, Alder MGR, for, of course, signing on to this as well. But I do want to give thanks to Representative Francesca Hong because without her, we would have not had the appropriate proper language together.
Thank you, Alder. All right. So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of Item 2. That brings us to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals that members of the council wish to make on today's agenda? Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
I have a disclosure. I used to work for Bassett Street Brunch Club, and I'm sorry I don't have the Legisstar, but they're filing for a change of agent. It would not affect my ruling or judgment on any of those.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really wanted to check in and let you know that I was here. I had a Zoom update, which caused me to be late, so I was just checking in to let you know that I am here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Well, we note you as present.
Thank you.
Alder Bennett?
Same here.
Is also here. Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Curry?
A consent agenda is moved with recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except, 1, items which have registrants wishing to speak, and 2, items which Alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item 18, Legislative File Number 77477, Report of the Mayor Submitting an Alder Committee Appointment. Business presented by the mayor. Recommended action is to adopt substitute. Agenda item 61, Legislative File Number 75926, by title only, repealing Sections 32.03 and 33.34 and amending Section 33.09, subset 3 of the Madison General Ordinances, to combine the City-County Homeless Issues Committee, Landlord and Tenant Issues Committee, and Housing Strategy Committee. Report of the Housing Strategy Committee, or the recommended action is to re-refer to the Common Council's meeting on August 1, 2023. Agenda item 64, Legislative File Number 77259, authorizing the use of up to 123,000 of community development block grant funds to implement a neighborhood improvement project identified in the South Madison Neighborhood Plan, and authorizing the Office of Business Resources and CDD staff to administer the building improvement grant program within South Madison. The recommended action from both Transportation Commission and the Disability Rights Commission is for council to adopt. Agenda item 67, Legislative File Number 77467, amending Section 31.112 of the Madison General Ordinances, advertising sign, bank, and replacement advertising signs, to extend the sunset date for eight years and make minor procedural clarifications to the bank, sign bank process for advertising signs. This is the introduction of new business from Alder Rumel. The recommended action is to re... An additional referral to the Urban Design Commission on May 10, and the Common Council on June 20. Agenda item 72, Legislative File Number 77441, adopting the final report of the Task Force on Farmland Preservation. The recommended action is referral to the Economic Development Committee on May 17, the Board of Park Commissioners on June 14, and the Common Council on August 1. Agenda item 76, Legislative File Number 77479, accepting the report titled Comprehensive Plan 2023 Progress Update. The recommended action is to refer to the Transportation Commission on May 10, shift existing referral dates to Plan Commission to May 22, and the Common Council on June 20. There are no agenda items excluded by either 1, request of Alders, or 2, due to speakers registered by 6:30 p.m. on May 2. It is my understanding that there are items to introduce from the floor.
Thank you, President Curry. Are there any items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Vice President Figueroa Cole?
I just want to make sure that that referral for the urban design is in accordance to the deadline that Matt Tucker has for that contract?
Uh...
For the billboards?
Yes. I know what you're talking about, Alder. On Item 67, so hold on to that question for a minute, Alder, and let's see if there's additional exclusions, and we'll take that up as a discussion on the consent agenda. Alder Martinez-Rutherford, did you?
I had an introduction.
From the floor, yes. We'll take those at the end. Thank you. Are there any exclusions from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then let's see. We do have Mr. Tucker on the line. Matt, there's a question about the timing of the referrals on Item 67. Is there any concern there? Currently, the... So the motion is for the referrals to be urban design on 5:10, and the Common Council on 6:20.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. We do need this to come back at the June 6 meeting, if we can, instead of June 20. That gives us enough time before the ordinance sunsets. We'd recommend the June 6 council meeting.
All right. Thank you, Matt. So let's try this. Is there any objection on Item 67 for the additional referrals to the Urban Design Commission on 5:10, and then back to Common Council on 6:6? Seeing no objection, we'll have that as the motion included on the consent agenda. Vice President Figueroa Cole, was that all?
That was all. Thank you.
All right. So let's go through then again. These items will remain on the consent agenda but have a different recommendation than what's printed in your agenda. On Item 18, the motion is to adopt the substitute. On Item 61, the motion is to re-refer to the council meeting of 8:1. On Item 64, the motion is to adopt. On Item 67, there's an additional referral to urban design on 5:10, back to the council on 6:6. On Item 72, there's additional referrals to the Economic Development Committee on 5:17, the Board of Park Commissioners on 6:14, and back to council on 8:1. On Item 76, there's additional referral to Transportation Commission on 5:10, then to Plan Commission on 5:22, and council on 6:20. And we have no items excluded. So on the consent agenda, President Curry, a motion? Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. We have no items excluded from the consent agenda, so we'll move to the end of the meeting and to any introductions of items from the floor. Alder Rumel?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I would like to move for introduction by title only, Legisstar Number 77600, naming a name to be determined as Madison's Next Youth Poet Laureate with referral to Madison Arts Commission on 5:9, and back to the Common Council on 5:16.
Motion, is there a second? Moved and seconded to introduce the item. Are there any questions or discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced. Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Yes, I would like to introduce Legisstar Number 77466. Title is Approving a Non-Competitive Sole Source Contract with Austin Brantley to Create and Install a Sculpture for the Darbo-Worthington Starkweather Neighborhood, and Authorizing the Acceptance of Outside Funding for the Project. Recommendations are to send a Finance Committee on 5:8, and return to Common Council on 5:16.
It's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce the item. Are there any questions or discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction? Seeing no objection, the item is introduced. Are there any additional introductions from the floor or announcements? Seeing none, President Curry, it's your turn. Move to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? You guys are a good luck charm. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.